I want to get on the planning and then give my credentials. Is there going to be a question as to our backgrounds and our credentials of what we think we'll bring to the board or is that, should that be included in this question?
Well, let's see. Um, planning issues, balance individual, what should be the role?
Mr. Mayor, we have their applications, so that stuff was attached.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Great. I just want to look and answer his question. I don't see a particular question about that. But you can feel free to tell us about yourself.
Okay, well, thank you very much then. Thank you very much. I would like to talk about myself and what I plan and hope to bring to the Planning Commission. My name is Kent Seda, and basically, we've been around this area, I'm 77 years old, and we've been around this area for 60 years. Had a commercial fish boat at Depot Bay 50 years ago, and we've had a lot of property down here and have a really good experience of when these used to be called the 20 miserable miles, and now it's Lincoln City and Taft and so on. And I'm concerned that we may be slipping back towards that, and so that's another reason I'm running for planning, and of course, I would like to go over the list that you have, so when you make your decision, the public would basically know of my experiences involved here. So, it wants to know about our qualifications and experience, and I would like to say that I was involved in Clackamas County and metro planning for 25 years. The watch that I have on my arm was given to me for my service of 25 years in planning in Clackamas County, and so I think that's a pretty good deal. I'm basically involved now in the planning of the Stafford Triangle, which is around Westland, Palleton, and Lake Oswego. I was invited to the board and the hamlet there to give my experiences to the county and so on. So, and I'd like to bring that to Lincoln City, the things that I have. As far as the high school, the education, I went to Westland High School and Northwestern College of Law. Okay. I'll bring a wealth of knowledge that I think has not been brought here before by working with various jurisdictions throughout the state, and I'll get into that in a little bit. As far as it wanted to know who our references were. My references are Richard Townsend, and this is references for professional, and the reason that I put him as a reference was that he made a comment that when I took Coast Avenue by adverse possession from the city and sold it back to him and to Olivia Beach, he indicated I might be smarter than I looked. And then my other reference is Richard Townsend, when we were dealing about some property that the city had flooded and devoured, and in dealing with that, Mr. Townsend put in the paper that he took a play out of the Kent Seda playbook. Well, if I'm smart enough to have a play in a playbook, I surely would be a good asset, I think, to this planning department, so I wanted to list him as my references. But as far as the additional information, I'm going to go back a little bit to my qualification and experience. I'm self-employed contractor, farmer logger. I've been an insurance, independent insurance adjuster since 1968. Basically, I've done a lot of very heavy injury. One year, I did 21 fatal wrecks. You know, I mean, people have passed away in fatal wrecks, and so I have a lot of experience in dealing with claims. I'm still licensed, and I still get called to testify from time to time, and I think I bring a wealth of knowledge about the insurance industry here. I'm also a land developer. We're currently putting in a redoing, an old historic fish camp on the Slets River, a mile and a half up from 101. And I think the things that I've listed here really cover a lot of the things that would be covered by a budget member. And like I say, I was elected in Clackamas County for 25 years. I went to Washington, DC, I was invited to go by the Corps of Engineers, 45 of us. We toured the water treatment plants there, slow sand filter, rapid sand filter, and other types of things. Went to New Orleans and also studied water there in the Mississippi, because water's going to be the main issue. And one of the things that I would bring to this budget committee would be to say, and I brought it up the last 10 years, but nobody pays any attention. We could have a terrorist attack or some kind of a problem, a power disruption, and I maintain that we should drill wells by our reservoirs and then have generators that we could bring in, run with diesel. And if we had a power shortage or a sabotage or something at our processing, water processing plant, we'd be able to pump the water right into our reservoirs and at least maybe give all the citizens 50 gallons or some water. We would not be totally trapped, and so I've been advocating that, but it's fallen on deaf ears. But those are the kinds of things that I think I believe that would really improve the city, in my perspective, at least thoughts that they might not have considered before.
Kent, are you going to wrap up, because we've got a few other people to go here, so?
Well, okay. I didn't know about the time limit. So, anyway, I'll go really quick on this thing. I basically was involved in the formation of the city of Damascus. It's the only city that's been since Raj Nishis did Raj Koram, and I was involved in that, involved in creating the Sunrise Water Authority, which is the first water authority ever created in the state. Basically, we just annexed 10 acres of land into the city of Estacada. I drew up all the plans and got that all approved, so I'm very familiar with annexation and those sorts of things, which I think would be quite helpful, along with developing a lot of other properties. Like I say, we, I've also, in the past, Oregon, Claims Manager in Southern Washington for Edna Insurance Company. I manage the state of Oregon for an insurance company's claims, of all the claims, and that included taking care of the offices in Bend, Eugene, Clement Falls, and so on, figuring their budgets annually, and taking care of the adjusters. So, I think that's a pretty good bit of information.
Okay, Kent, I'm going to move on.
Cut me off.
Well, I'm sorry, but you've got more people to ask you questions, and you'll be able to tag on those other questions.
That'll be fine. Just want to let people know that I wasn't a greenhorn.
All right. Okay, that's impressive. We do have two minutes, is that what it says? Oh, it does. It says each candidate will have two minutes to respond. Well, okay. Well, I didn't go in order here, I'm sorry. Patty?
Thanks very much for giving me the opportunity here. My name's Patty Crowen, recently retired, moved here just shy of two years ago. Prior to this, I spent 30 years in private practice, environmental planning and resources and development, primarily water resources. I spent a number of years in the hydroelectric industry, working with Bureau of Reclamation, Corps of Engineers, state, federal agencies, and local environmental groups. So, I also taught land use, geography, physical geography, cultural geography, and my last volunteer work was pulling together a community mediation service for a county. We took a number of cases that were clogging up small claims courts and developed a, like I said, a volunteer-based community mediation service that the courts then started to utilize us to lighten their load. So, I'm very interested in the way cities operate, the way planning commissions operate. I understand that the Planning Commission is typically looked on as sort of an extension of staff and looking at enforcement of existing planning policies. I live in Rhodes End, and I know Rhodes End has recently been annexed. Not terribly familiar with all of the history of that, but look forward to helping integrate that particular area of the city.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Cultural geography?
Yes.
Can you tell me what that is?
Sure. Without going into the Mitchner version of it, there's two areas of geography. Physical geography is typically climatology, geomorphology, soils, that type of topic. Cultural geography looks at different land use patterns, different uses of vegetation around the world, different cultural differences. So, for example, you might take your kids on a field trip to Harris Ranch and show them what a cow, how a cow is treated in California. Feedlot industry versus how a cow might be treated in India. So, cultural geography tied to the land.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so nice, I didn't follow my order, so I'm going to go to James next. No show? No, James. Okay. Then we're going to Sean.
Hello, everybody. My name's Sean Keir. I don't have any previous experience in government work of any kind. I have a lot of experience in management, problem solving, noticing the details. I've run restaurants on both coasts of this country. I've managed Florida State University's catering department. I know how to handle large crowds, deal with problems from the inside out. These people all sound very qualified in some aspect or another. I always think it's good to have fresh eyes and untrained eyes on the same problem. I'm also very nervous with public speaking. Yeah, I'm not sure what else I can tell you about my qualifications, other than I'm dedicated to this town. I'm a business owner. I've lived here for, going on six years now, and again, my background is hospitality, so I know what it's like to live paycheck to paycheck here in this town and all over this country. I can definitely see the problem we have for housing. I hear it from my employees on a regular basis. I'm trying to stay ahead of this pay raise curve that we're on in this state. I'm also trying to figure out how I can afford to pay my employees' benefits and give them paid sick leave, and I can't do that with the way things are structured currently. So, that's where I stand.
Appreciate it. Miles?
I'm Miles Schlesinger, and I retired to my home in Lincoln City about, in 2009. I have been heavily involved in the hospitality industry, operating restaurants and motels in Oregon and Idaho, Washington, and as far east as Salt Lake City, Utah. In the early part of 2000, I started building homes on my subdivided lots, and according to the goals of the planners in the tri-county area, they were infill lots. But I thought that the program was good, and I added one thing to the mix, which was building them green, energy efficient with the help of Earth Advantage, and the houses were certified Earth Advantage, and they had a little better economy for the duration of the time that they were lived in. And they did real well during the first couple of years where I tested them. I have been involved in the community through Rotary and the Stroke Club of Oregon, where I had a premature stroke at age 43, and I've had a great recovery due to my water skiing abilities on Devil's Lake, and I've enjoyed being a resident here, and that's why I retired here. I have not had experience on the Planning Commission, but I think my experience lends itself to planning, and it disturbs me that Lincoln City has the lowest level of income in the state of Oregon, basically, and we should try to improve that, and I think it is a doable deal. You've got to have homes that are affordable, and there's land available for that, and you've got to have land that's zoned for commercial activity other than the hospitality industry, and that is doable also. So, I look forward to being a member of this community for the duration and hope that I can serve you.
Great. Thank you very, very much, and I apologize for jumping out of order here, but that's where we go. So, Councilor Walkie, you are next.
Okay.
Before you get started, could I just interject that Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Griffiths are on the Planning Commission, they're being re-interviewed. They've actually already been interviewed and appointed, but because of certain allegations about the manner of their appointment, we're asking you to re-interview them. So, just to be clear, that's why they're here.
Mr. Mayor, at the end, Kathy and I will go through all of the vacancies with you, so you know exactly what the number of appointments and so forth, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we make sure Mr. Seda knows this is the Planning Commission and not the Budget Committee? Is that, I want to make sure he's in the right place.
Oh, did I say budget?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize for that. I guess that's because I'm 77, I'm slipping a little. But I noticed the silver hair up there, so maybe you'll give me a break. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay. Want to remind you that you each have two minutes to respond to the questions. The question I was assigned is, what are, what do you feel are the top three planning issues facing Lincoln City? So, first on the list is Amanda.
I would say the top three issues that we're dealing with in Lincoln City is, number one, affordable housing. Number two, not enough different kinds of business. What I mean by that is that there's not a lot of fun things to do for kids in town. And then, for the third top issue, I would say the number of vacation rentals that we have.
What was that third one again, please?
The number of vacation rentals that we have in Lincoln City.
Too many? Not enough?
Too many.
I just realized something. We're asking people in the same order again, and that's not fair for the same person to be asked the question first every time. So, I think we should rotate them.
Well, if you want my order, I think I did, Amanda, Gary, Steve, then I went to Kent, and then Patty, Sean, Miles.
Gary should have been first this time.
Yeah. Yeah, I apologize. I apologize, Amanda. You won't be first again, I hope. Gary, question?
Please, microphone.
Oh. The top three planning issues facing Lincoln City.
I believe the top three issues that we have as problems here in Lincoln City is, number one, is affordable housing, and I don't mean affordable for professionals, I mean affordable for the people that are working here today. So, that might be a little bit less affordable, or less pricey than some of the housing that we feel works and is affordable. Maybe you call it workforce housing. I think number two is that we need to diversify the employment categories in town, somehow bring in some form of industry, light industry, something that would permit people to move upward in pay grade greater than sales and hospitality. I'm not exactly sure what we can get in the way of companies interested, but we need to, we have a great opportunity with Cascadehead. There's a lot of land there that we could use in different ways that might make it possible to bring in light industry and thereby jump our pay scales somewhat here in town, because there are a lot of retirees and there are a lot of service industry people, jobs, but there aren't a lot of better-paying jobs, and I'd like to see some way to jumpstart that. So, I feel like that's a direction we need to go. And the number three thing I would say is share the pain. We're right now very compressed in our zones, and I'd like to see the zone, maybe the current way of doing planning zones changed somewhat, so that we can diversify areas, and maybe we can do it through Cascadehead, but I'm not necessarily comfortable that that's the only way to do it. But I think Cascadehead has a great opportunity that we didn't have before, that we should take advantage of while it's still in our position.
Steve?
Yeah, I think our number one priority is affordable housing and keeping our community a community, making sure that people who work here have the opportunity to live here and can afford to live here. I think we need to look, as Gary said, at some new zoning options for Lincoln City, and we will have the opportunity to do that in 2017 when we review the comprehensive plan. And a third thing, I think an opportunity, Gary mentioned some, and I think one thing we haven't quite looked at at Lincoln City, and I think we should, and that is, we don't just have the beach, we have a lot of wonderful natural resources in town or nearby, such as our open space areas, Cascadehead, Slets Bay, and I think there are economic opportunities there to focus on ecotourism, and in particular, kayaking, and getting people here for that, and getting people here to explore open space areas, and getting people here to do some bird watching. There are a lot of people that came to town two weeks ago to see the bird that showed up, the skoder from Eurasia, for a second time that had been seen in North America, and a lot of people came to town to see that. I think we should focus more on those kinds of opportunities as a way of building our economy. And finally, I think we need to make our, continue to make our community attractive to both vacationers as well as retirees, and I think the more retirees we have in town, that will contribute handsomely to our economy, because folks like myself stay here pretty much year-round, and we spend our money on a variety of different businesses.
Sean?
I can easily agree with everybody that the affordable housing is our number one issue. I see people move into town and then move right back out because they can't find anywhere to live permanently with, in their means, and they make decent money. There's no reason they should be paying that. There is a lack of diversity in this town. I agree with you completely, and also that the, our town has a lot of resources, there's a lot of land owned by the city that could be used appropriately to help benefit the long-term of this city. I don't see a lot of opportunity during the winter months here when it's the hardest. I see employers planning long-month vacations while their employees can't afford that and have to go on to subsidized income. We should be pushing for, you know, winter activities that are feasible out here and can attract more year-round business.
Patty?
Well, echoing everyone else, obviously affordability, and having that affordable housing integrated into the communities is important, not having an isolation-type design. I think infrastructure is another issue that needs to be addressed. I think often that is, sort of brings up the rear, and there's a lot of street work that needs to be looked at. And, you know, you asked about cultural geography, you know, it's the human overlay on the environment, and, you know, there's a reason that manufacturing happens in certain locations and, you know, but our economy's changing, and I write a check for one of my utilities for this city every month, and I send it to Utah. There's no reason that, you know, processing of utility bills and that type of work that can be done over the internet could not be located someplace like Lincoln City. So, building some of those business and economic growth resources in the city could be an interesting way to go.
Thanks. Miles?
I have thought that workforce housing is different than affordable housing, and to make it clear, I built affordable housing, they were starter houses that were economical to build. So, I think both workforce housing and affordable housing is a priority, and there is plenty of land available for both of those kind of projects. In addition, I believe that there has to be some room for upward mobility for our population, and to create that, you have to have jobs outside of the hospitality industry. For example, Charter Communications has call centers that answer your questions when your television goes out or your internet goes out. Why couldn't Lincoln City be a magnet for a call center, saying that's a good kind of industry, and it doesn't take much to build that? Hood River has one, I think Redmond, Oregon, has some call center-type activity, and I think that Dave Price should be given those opportunities to generate leads. He's done a good job, but it's a difficult job to attract people to the coast because of the highway structure that is existing right now. So, that can be improved also, but the opportunities for people aside from the hospitality industry has to be developed here to have a vibrant economy.
Thank you. And Kent?
I think--
Have you used the microphone? Sorry, so it gets on record.
Thanks. Thank you. I think we're looking at this backwards. Everybody's talking about affordable housing, why don't we have living wage jobs? It would seem like we should be giving a hand up rather than a dumbing down, that, well, what can we do to just go lower and lower on the scale rather than having people come up? This city council members, and in past city councils, have just been totally restrictive of anything coming in that would do anything. For example, a few years ago, 15 years, we were going to put in the Seda Center, which brought 100 jobs and a million-dollar payroll, and the city said we didn't want it. In the meantime, we've had an opportunity, we were visited by Key Bank, we were told by members on this board that we have enough banks in this town, so we don't need one down there in Nelscott, because it's a walking community. We can't do anything with our property there, we have two beautiful accesses, the highways widen, but for example, U-Haul trucks wanted to park some trucks there. This council has said, no, we're not going to allow U-Haul trucks to park there, although it's commercial property, because they rent trailers, and trailers are equipment, and no equipment's allowed in Nelscott. So, we could have brought dozens and dozens and dozens of jobs to this town that would be fairly good jobs, but they've all been killed by the planning and the city council. So, I think we need to review a little bit of our policies, and I was hopeful that I might visit about that. When you look at other cities, John Day, that used to be a super city with logging and all of that, well, now the largest employer over there, is a good friend of mine, makes Bow Strings, Winner's Choice Bow Strings, that's a larger employee. Well, that's, that really is just the type of work that we could have here that's non-invasive, very clean, very tidy, very quiet, but there seems to be no interest, action, or thoughts on the president administration to ever try to bring anything good. So, my thing is jobs, 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 and get rid of some of these dopey regulations, like you can't have trailers because there are equipment in Nelscott with U-Haul. I mean, where'd you stifle down? Like I say, I could have brought dozens of jobs to town that would have been good-paying jobs, but I've been killed at every time. So, that's what I would like to do, and I think our schools need to be improved a lot. The kids really, I don't think they're getting the education here necessarily, from my little experience with that, that would lend them to hang around, you know? You don't see kids after they get out of the school staying in town, they move off to Salem or something. to Salem or something, there's nothing here for them. So I think if we look at getting better-paying jobs, get rid of regulations and stop dozens and dozens and dozens of jobs that pay good from coming to town, and then try to help with our school system to educate the kids so that they'll be ready for these types of jobs. I volunteered to give, you know, some lectures on land development, things like that, and I was told nobody had any interest or, don't bother. So anyway, I think we could do a lot more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the last. Okay, so next we have Mr. Ryan.
Right.
But you can't ask Amanda first this time.
No, I'm not going to. My question is, what should be the role of the public when making planning commission decisions? I'm going to start with you, Steve.
I think we do a pretty good job of alerting the public when we're having a meeting and what's going to be on the agenda, and what their opportunities are to speak before the planning commission, either on non-agenda items, or when there's a public hearing on a particular development request or plan that needs to be reviewed or approved. I think the public input is absolutely valuable, especially when it comes to the impact of rezoning for a particular neighborhood. I would certainly encourage as much public input as possible on the issues that come before the planning commission. I know that in my experience on the planning commission, some of my decisions have helped informed by the input we have received from people who testified before the commission, so that is extremely valuable.
Thank you. Jane, oh, no, he's not here. Sean?
I'm not sure if I have enough experience to answer that as well as I'd like to, but I will say, I think the public's comments and suggestions or reactions to anything that the city does, it should be heard wherever possible, within reason. I mean, there shouldn't be a riot about anything, but yeah, I think, I mean, that's what we're all here for, trying to give our public peace.
Thank you.
Patty?
Well, a good bit of my private practice was in facilitating public involvement, developing public involvement programs, and then implementing them, largely on the questions of natural resource use and development. So I think while it can be very messy, it's critical to get public input on programs, particularly projects that impact the public, and often they have information that is new and valuable in making better-informed decisions, so I think it's critical.
Thank you. Miles?
As far as I know, and my experience goes to watching the planning commission review various matters, I think the open communication between citizens and those sitting where you are now is pretty good, and I don't see any change necessary. I believe in citizen participation, and I think the citizens of Lincoln City have that opportunity.
Thank you. Ken?
I think that the public's input in decisions is critical. I've testified dozens, maybe even hundreds of times, and I've sat on the opposite side of the bench where you're sitting, and I feel I can crawl in the skin of each one of you and see how you think, because I've been there for 25 or 30 years, making the decisions. And I really hope that the public, I always tried not to make a decision until the public testimony was all in, and you see, sometimes people, and I really think that everybody should keep an open mind at all times while the public is testifying with no preconceived motions, and then try, the best we can, we're all humans, but try to consider that. And I put the public testimony as very, very, very important, so.
Thank you. Amanda? The mobile mic.
I think that public participation is extremely crucial when making decisions. Part of the reason that we're here is to improve Lincoln City, so without actually having any sort of public input, then we can't possibly know what to do to fix the city. And I'd also like to add that I am a Taft graduate in the class of 2008.
Gary?
I see public input is pretty valuable because of the fact that opportunities that we don't see sitting there behind the bench come in sometimes, and I'd really be appreciative every time I hear something about how we can bring housing prices down, because that'll help us in the future. And then the other part of it is the buy-in, you know? If the public has the right to come in and talk to us, you know, like, right now, they'll feel more like this is their community, and they'll feel more like what decision is made, they're part of, and that helps bring us together, because, you know, if you don't have no say in something, how much of it do you care about? You know, you can sit at the sidelines and throw darts at people, but, you know, when you are part of the process, then you have a buy-in, which is natural.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'm going to start from the far end, give those guys at the end of the alphabet the chance. Mr. Seda? My question is, how should the planning commission balance an individual property owner's desire to develop property with the community's interests?
Can you repeat that?
How should the planning commission balance an individual property owner's desire to develop property with the community's interests?
Well, that's really an interesting question, and I think a good one. I think the planning commission needs to look at the overall objectives of the community, the type of the community we're in. For example, here we're in a tourist, a tourist community, and a developer who then wants to develop his property that would enhance the tourism, the VRDs. I think that we should be pushing for more VRDs rather than trying to limit them, and yet at the same time be looking at the neighborhoods that they're in, and not to cause people to have a devaluation in their way of life or in their homes. So when a development is brought in, you should look at how can it enhance the neighborhood, enhance the town, enhance the income level, and all of the good things, and yet not be taking away from, taking away from the character of the community, or the way people who have lived there or might choose to come and live in the future would be harmed. So when you're having somebody come in with a development, and they want to put in a jackhammer repair department behind a senior citizen thing, I'm not sure that's what we want.
Thank you. Miles, do you want me to repeat again, or should I repeat the question?
Could you?
Yeah. How should the planning commission balance an individual property owner's desire to develop property with the community interests?
Granted, this is a tourist destination, and that's our primary source of revenue at this time. I believe that the ownership of homes has to reflect the community standards. So what I'm saying there is, if you bought a home in an area that has some vacation rentals, I don't think you should outlaw or make illegal the renting of your home, but there has to be standards to vacation rentals. I see no objection to having new neighborhoods have a restriction on daily vacation rentals, but I believe that the problems that exist today can be solved by having good inspection and rules and regulations that are known, and you get a warning once, twice, and the third time, your license is taken away, and you cannot rent your home anymore as a vacation rental, because you can't follow the rules and regulations, whatever they may be. And as a vacation renter for two years, and I paid the taxes and rented my home, there was an absolute lack of anything that required noise restrictions or anything. The inspector, Mr. Novak, worked from eight to five, basically, five days a week, and he didn't work on Sunday and Monday. Well, I think you have to work Saturday and Sunday, when the vacation rentals are most likely rented, and enforce noise regulations and rules, whatever they might be.
Thank you. Patty?
Well, you would hope that the community interests are reflected in the zoning requirements, and, you know, the role, really, in my estimation, of the planning commission and the planning department is to enforce that, those zoning regulations. Now, there's obviously some fudge words in some of the zoning, and some folks may be interested in pushing the limits, but I think that if you get to really what the interests are of both the community and the landowner, then you can get to a point where everybody can coexist. Enforcement is always the bugaboo. I mean, I would reflect on the last gentleman's statement, you know, that, I don't know if you really drill down, I don't think that so many folks are anti-VRD, they're anti-non-enforcement of VRD restrictions, so.
Thank you. Sean?
Do you mind repeating the question one more time for me?
How should the planning commission balance an individual property owner's desire to develop property with the community interest?
That's a good question. It feels like it's very loaded, the odd part in life of trying to please everybody, right? You know, that's a tough question, and again, you know, we have to look closely at what their intentions are, their land use intentions, if those coincide with the rest of the neighborhood, the city's future goals. I think everything's negotiable when you're doing any kind of business or land use change in this town. I think everything can be considered with respect. Whether it gets a quick no or not is another story, but I think being able to hear somebody's idea, maybe that person has a different idea of the city's future, that might be something we've missed, so listening to them at least would be important in the situation, no matter the outcome. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, I think that balance is addressed through our zoning and through our ordinances, and I think sometimes we get into trouble when the zoning isn't respected, or some of the ordinances are pushed, the envelope is pushed. And I know, in my experience on the planning commission, when, for example, a variance comes before us, I look at the request, and then I look at the ordinance to see what leeway I can make in the decision, what does the ordinance say? And I stick to the parameters of the ordinance, because that is our, that's, it's zoning, and it's our ordinances that help maintain that balance between an individual's right and the welfare of the community.
Thank you. Gary?
Yeah, that's a loaded question, as the man at the other end said. When you have a set of rules and regulations, you want to enforce them equally, so you want to make sure that nobody gets a step up on somebody else, that justice is served equally. But I also believe that a person should have the right to do almost anything with their property to the extent that they don't negatively impact their neighbors, you know? And so I'm not into restrictive zoning too much, because I don't want to see maybe light industry turned away because it's not the right thing in that zone, so I'm trying to make a balance in my mind where you could allow more things if you can prove that they're not negatively impacting the neighborhood. If I was a property owner and I bought a piece of property, and I'm fortunate, I live in a commercial zone, so I don't have that issue, but if I bought a piece of property here, and I decided at some point in time I wanted to turn it into a VRD, and that's the hot button topic today, and I was told, you know, well, I can't, you know, because we've got new regulations that have come in to act after I bought my property, I would consider that a taking of my property. And I know that that's not necessarily where we're at as a community right now, but it is a way I feel about it, that the more regulations you put on something, the tighter you squeeze that ball, the more rights you're taking away from the person who actually owns the property. And so we have to be, to me, it's a hard rule to follow and not be taking somebody's property from them, and I believe property rights in America are pretty essential to stay, that what you bought, you still have, as much as you possibly can.
And Amanda?
In my opinion, if someone who owns land or a business owner decides that they want to do something that benefits the community, I don't see why we would tell them no. I think it should depend on what the actual need is in the community, say, for example, like our emergency warming shelters. Say if someone came forward and they decided, hey, you know what, I really want to help the community, and I really want to address an actual problem. We have so many community problems that it just doesn't make sense to me that you would tell somebody no because of that, and if someone comes forward and decides that they want to use their property to benefit the community, I honestly think it's commendable to that person.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, next on the list, go to councilor board.
Hard questions, huh? Big questions. Well, thanks, all of you for being here. My question is, what should be the role of the city in creating a look or image in the business districts? All right. Steve, why don't you go ahead and answer that question? Is that okay? Am I in the wrong? Was he? That's all, I'll ask you later, Steve. No, no, I'll ask you later. Miles?
I don't know that there is a system that we should make mandatory for, and I would assume your question talks to architectural standards for facilities built or remodeled, but I know from my experience in Baker City, Oregon, that they had a program for the downtown area that I think was very successful in taking off all of the-- area that I think was very successful in taking off all of the modernization and restoring the city to the 1900s look, storefronts and such, updated for current building codes. I think the project like that is going, is going well. For example, the Nelscott refurbishing as they widen the road. I like that little cluster of homes where the Christmas tree store is. But there's a real hodgepodge here of architectural things, starting at the Dorchester House and going back to the old days. And I don't really have an opinion as to whether you, whether we should structure remodeling so that it fits a strict architectural style. I'm open to that, I guess.
Okay. What should be the role of the city in creating a look or image in the business districts?
I think the role of the city should be like, maybe like a partnership program to where, say, a business wants to get a new sign or something like that. Whatever that cost may be, I think that the city should have some involvement in that because when you are beautifying your storefront, it does make it more attractive to the tourists. And so when your city's more attractive, you will definitely bring in a lot more sales. So if there was like a partnership program to where whatever that cost would be, say the business owner has half and the city puts in the other half, I think it would make it a lot more possible for business owners to beautify their stores. And I also think it would just make Lincoln City look more attractive.
Thank you.
I think Amanda's on the right track that if you have a really good look, that can draw people in and help promote sales. I think, for example, some developers in our town, like the developers of Olivia Beach, focused on the historic look that Nelscott had and tried to replicate that in their development. And I think they came up with an attractive development as a result. And I think that's true also if you look at the Nelscott Gap plans. It's sort of building on what is here in Lincoln City and what we have always valued when we visited the town or why we chose to live here. I think, on the other hand, within the business areas, I think it's good to have a look because I think that helps draw customers in. But I think we need to be careful that we don't place requirements on businesses that are overwhelmingly expensive to implement. And I think we have to look at that carefully. I think the key issue in regards to the public when it comes to businesses is the new building going to be safe? Are there proper exits and exits? Can fire trucks get into them quickly and safely? So, yes, you know, I think look can help, help our markets, help the economy, yeah.
Mr. Seda. I guess the role of your, I've really got a kind of an open mind to the whole thing. But we have property over in central Oregon, in the Pine and Sisters and other places. And Sisters has really done quite well, you know, the property values have gone up, and it's kind of a theme town. I think most of you have probably been over there and see where they're going. And so what you're getting at, I believe, is should a town have a kind of a theme? Like up in Washington, they have, you know, the kind of the Swiss theme on that one town. The name, I can't bring it up. But I, what's the name? Leavenworth, good, very good. But I do think the city has a role to play in setting a theme in the, on the business district where that it might enhance everybody and be a draw for the entire community. I've noticed that you have McDonald's, Wendy's, Burger King, and all four of the restaurants sitting on corners for the fast foods. And the idea there is, well, you think, well, it should only be one. The business would be better than all four. But the idea is that you want to attract people who are hungry, and once they get off and get there, then divide where it's going to go. And that's what a role the theme might have to do is to attract people to our city, to Lincoln City, with the idea of this is a beautiful place, we really want to come and enjoy it. And once they're there, then they'll be dispersed among the various shops. So I think if there's an overall role that makes the town more attractive to the public generally, I think I would, I would consider that with an open mind.
So it's an interesting concept. I guess I focus more on your term "image." And I think it would be interesting to know what Lincoln City feels its image is. I can tell you from a former life, being a business owner in an area that was focus, the focus of a redevelopment by a city, you really need buy-in from all of the business owners. And you need to have some sort of economic incentive for them to comply. There's, there are always the legal hooks that you're doing it as a retrofit, earthquake safety, big issue, evacuation and such. So there are ways that you can approach it. I think it falls under the category of long-range planning because these are often small steps that you take toward a larger goal.
And last but not least, Gary. By the way, thank you, Patty.
All the good ideas are gone. But I do like the idea that you build towards a theme of some form or another. And I think that the city has the responsibility of trying to maintain a value. And so some kind of an image that we want to create. I'm not sure we really have that, except in little nuggets in places. Olivia Beach was a good example. But I think it's a good idea, I really do. And I think that the city somehow financially, not necessarily paying for it, but incentivizing it, you know, whether it's we drop your property taxes by something if you do this, you know, something to create a business model that makes sense to the business owners. Because, you know, remodeling isn't free. And if we want a direction and we want to get there, then we need to do something to help the businessman as he makes those decisions, you know, something that makes it a future payoff, you know. It's sort of like if you wanted to incentivize solar, you know, if you want to see solar, you incentivize it, and people will go that route. I'm not sure what the model is, but I think that the role of the government is, yes, we would definitely be interested in trying to make the city look better tomorrow.
I stopped Sean to go through, is that okay? Sean? I said last but not least. No, go ahead.
Thank you, Ken. I definitely think a cohesiveness for, from Cutler City all the way up to, you know, the Rhodes End area, everything still seems pretty divided as the boroughs as they once were in the '60s. You know, I live right on the corner of 23rd and 111 with my business, Salty Dog Hound Lounge, and constantly do I get people coming up and asking us directions, where's the rest of town? Or they just turn around right there on 23rd and go back north. And we'll see them come back again because they don't, they don't know that there's more to go. And I feel like the southern end of our town suffers a lot for it, including Nelscott. I really like the plans that we have for the Nelscott Gap. I think it looks beautiful. The neighborhood, the new neighborhood, looks amazing. I can't afford anything over there, but it looks good. I think cohesiveness is the same thing you see in every successful old city or small town that's been around for a little while. We have the easiest advertising that you could ask for. We have the Oregon coast. Everybody wants to go to it. All we have to do is keep them here. We have a simple job to do, we just have to find a simple way to make it happen.
Thank you. And Councilor Arrakis.
Last question, folks. Last question. How should the city, and I want to thank you for being here and for showing interest in being on the Planning Commission, thank you all. How should the city balance affordability with regulations for multifamily housing, i.e. apartment houses? Balance affordability with multifamily housing. Sean, let's just start with you, if you don't mind.
Sure. That's a very good question. Budgets are always hard. Finding an appropriate budget that keeps everything smooth is hard. Running my business, I'm sure lots of you guys are up there, are business owners too, you know, there's never a good week where something doesn't pop up. Something's always going to pop up. Sorry, you're going to have to repeat the question, I lost my train of thought.
How should the city balance affordability with regulations for multifamily housing?
Well, first of all, they have to be encouraged to build here, but they don't need to be encouraged so much that it's not in the benefit of the people who will then live in them, if that makes any sense. That's my response.
Thank you. Steve, please.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I think we need to look at the regulations for multifamily housing and see how they might be tweaked and what incentives we might give to a developer to maybe cut back on some of the requirements so they can reduce the costs or the future rental of the units that they're building. And I think, I know there have been suggestions that have come before the Planning Commission in regard to that, and I think some of them make a good deal of sense, and I can't repeat, can't provide examples for you right now. But I know that idea certainly is in the works. And I think that might be an avenue for obtaining more affordable housing within Lincoln City is to provide those incentives to the developer that would help make the cost of those units more affordable, either to own or to rent.
Thank you. Gary.
That's an issue we've been dealing with, and affordability is almost always counter to regulations. The more regulations you put on something, the more price you put on something. That said, you don't want anybody to be able to build slum housing in Lincoln City. You have to have safety codes that can't be violated. But you should be real careful about your regulating to the extent that you add cost as you go. We have some look decorational regulations that are currently going in, and they do help establish a better look of the apartment buildings, but they do add cost. I don't have a real answer, other than maybe a density issue that we could deal with. All apartments don't have to be 700 square feet or bigger, so maybe size has a play in that. How much playground space is available for the families that live there? It's critical for the kids. It's critical for the community ultimately because those kids, if they're not there playing, are somewhere else, probably not having a good time at somebody else's expense. So you've got, it's a big balance issue, and, but I do know that regulations cost money. And so somehow we have to only regulate to the extent we absolutely have to. And otherwise, don't do things that add cost. Maybe hookup fees, something like that, we could give them a break on if we want a little better look, if we want more windows, if we want balconies. We have to be able to try to get some kind of a give and take because we do need that housing. We need it desperately, and overregulating isn't going to get us what we want. But you don't want your community to live in doghouses either.
Thank you. Amanda.
I think that we should work from the inside out. What I mean by that is that you can build affordable housing all day long, and someone can make that decision for what affordable housing is. However, $900 to $1,000 a month is not affordable housing for people that work minimum wage jobs. In my opinion, we should take a minimum wage job, a full-time minimum wage job, and basically like the federal regulations to where it's like 25% to 30% of their income is what their rent should be. I think that that's more important, figuring out what the rent is actually reasonable as for the jobs that are in the area, and then work from there on what your building costs would be. Because I just kind of, you could dump money in it all day long, but if you're not actually making affordable housing affordable, then you're kind of missing the point.
Thank you. Patty.
So it's a curious question, when you say balance affordability with regulations on multifamily dwellings, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
You know, both of those things are a spectrum. Affordability is quite a different definition for a lot of people. And I appreciate Amanda's comments, you know, there certainly is some logic to working backwards to define affordability by what someone in your community actually can afford. But the other aspect of it that struck me, that the gentleman at the end mentioned, was that, you know, we don't want, you know, slum areas in Lincoln City where these large apartment complexes are built. And I would argue that that's really on the far end of the spectrum of density and the approaches that you can take to incorporating denser than single-family within single-family areas, and thereby avoiding the us versus them aspect of what typically we, those of us that are old enough to remember subsidized housing looks like, and integrate that into the community. There's a lot of infill areas in this community, there's a lot of land that's owned by the city that could be used as models for this type of development, where you actually integrate multiple family homes in single-family home neighborhoods as well. And I can point you to several communities that have done that very effectively.
Thank you. Miles?
I think that Lincoln City could solve the problem with relative ease by creating areas where multifamily could be built and subsidizing that in terms of the building costs, the plan check area, the sewer connection fees, and even some discount to giving the land to a developer if he fulfills certain agreements and allows the facility that he builds to be committed to workforce housing or, or, say the term.
Affordable?
Affordable housing. And we could solve the problem quite easily with that area, integrating it into various areas of Lincoln City. So I don't anticipate it being hard to do with finding the right developer, but I think the will has to be there, and I
And I don't see the will, at this point, being evident.
Thank you. Kent?
Well, that is, you know, with the question, how should the city balance affordability with regulations in multiple-family? Are we talking about regulations in where they can be located in land use? Or are we talking about regulations in if you need sprinklers or smoke detectors or what regulations or room size and that? So I'm not sure in your question how we want to go. But just as a matter of discussion, the multiple, having had apartments on Jetty Street by the factory outlet and rented primarily to people who worked at the casino and at the deal for, the shopping deal for a dozen years or so, I got a kind of a good idea about affordable housing and so on that way. But I was going to fall back on the less affordable housing in a way that a person can have and the better jobs that we have that pay a higher salary, far are we ahead than to go the other way? The biggest costs to cities are the schools, the services, the sewer, the water, and all of that. And the people who live in the affordable housing use the water, take the showers, have the police calls, and use the services that runs it down versus type A buildings or something that would rent out that are open from 8:00 to 5:00 in the morning. They don't have police calls, they don't have showers, they don't do anything. And they generate the tax base, and what I'm getting to is the tax base that pays for the school and the water and the sewer and all that. And so when you get to the affordable housing, they use up a lot more than a lot of times the occupants pay in or the owners of the land. And so you kind of got to look at the regulations there. But the thing about creating slums, you don't want to do that. And you don't want to create areas where gangs can develop, nor do you want to bring in people into the regular living areas that would reduce housing by having the apartment type thing. So that's a tough call. But I do think they should be more grouped together and that there should be land that's probably a little less desirable with ocean views and all of that, the lower-income housing, and that regulations should be slackened to make it as possible, the most possible of building there on the land that's just a little bit marginal, that isn't exactly going to make it. And maybe we look at some land that could have been classed as semi-wetlands, or whether it was wetlands and things weren't allowed. Maybe we could relax the regulations and work with property that was pretty marginal and not being utilized for that purpose. So, boy, that's a tough question, Chester.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Well, and thank you all for listening to us. We sure appreciate your openness.
Yes, thank you all very much. Just stick a while. So, Mr. Janamert?
Okay. Mayor, City Council. So let me explain a little bit of the decision that's before you. As it pertains to Commissioners Cunningham and Griffiths, as our attorney mentioned, there had been some legal questions pertaining to their appointment in the interview process we had gone on before. So they are before you to be interviewed to simply eliminate that legal question. So essentially, what you're doing with their positions is, will be reaffirming the appointment that they had already received. Now, you then have five candidates and four vacancies, okay? You're out of time for this meeting. If you would like to deliberate on this further today and make a decision, then you should change your agenda at the beginning of the next meeting and add that at the end. If you're not prepared to do that, then we can have, you can continue your deliberations and appointment next Monday, when you meet again.
We did decide on Monday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
In the appointment, you can make all four appointments if you desire, or you can do less than that if you desire and go for additional interviews at a later date. That is also at your discretion. So Mayor, what I would suggest is that in just the last few minutes, if you're interested in carrying on today, then you should make that change in your agenda for the next meeting, or we will schedule your decision for next Monday. It will be done by ballot, as our recorder has done in the past with these interviews and processes that you've gone through.
Councilor?
My understanding that there's a vacant position on the City Council, sorry, on the Planning Commission that expires the end of 2018. Also, there will be another vacancy created in January that expires in 18. So are we appointing two people for two-year terms and two people for four-year terms?
I'm going to let our recorder address that. She's the one who's on top of that.
Yes, they would do, they would be filling a partial term, except for Bruce Robinson's position, and his expires at the end of this year.
So that would be a four-year term?
That would be a four-year term, yes. And then I believe the other.
Mr. Hoagland's term expires the end of this year, so that would be a.
So that's another one then?
Four-year term.
And then Deanna's expires later on, so that would be a partial term.
Right. It's two years. So there's two two-year and two four-year terms that need to be built.
So part of the decision-making process that you'll have to go through is also to determine the appointment for the two years and the four years. So really, your first question for you that you have tonight is, do you want to continue to deliberate and make a decision tonight? If so, you don't need to make that decision right now, but at the opening of the next meeting, you would need to amend your agenda. If you don't amend the agenda, then we will simply put this on the next Monday's agenda.
I don't think there's enough time to do it justice with this many people, so I would say carry this over or amend the agenda, however you want to do it. Just put it on the next one?
I think so. The 19th?
Would that be 19? Yeah, next week. Does that work for everyone else?
Sure. Well, we could decide Cunningham and Griffiths tonight, could we not?
Yeah.
Get a little bit of work out of the way?
Yeah.
Yeah, or no?
Is there any problem with separating those out, parsing them out and do that?
I don't believe so. No, sir.
Okay. Well, then let's do that. And then for the remaining, for the 19th.
Mr. Mayor, if we were to take Commissioner Ward's suggestion, that would mean we would extend the meeting tonight, the council meeting tonight. And in addition to that, we would have another session on the 19th. So since we're going to have a session on the 19th, I'd just as soon do all four candidates on the 19th. But it's either way.
When's your next meeting? What's that? Oh, you're done. Okay, so you're done for the year. All right. That's fine. You don't have to be there for, yeah, that works for me. All four next week. Good? Okay.
There's actually six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six.
That's fine.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that, Ron, or are you just going to carry it over?
I think we're good.
Okay. Again, thank you very, very much. This was a long process, and I appreciate your patience with us all in this process. So thank you very much. All right. And we'll take a minute to get some beverages and microphones on, off?
Yeah.
Microphones are off.
You know, I've been fortunate to travel the world, you know, all the continents, South America, and been to Malaysia several times, quite a few to Europe, Tasmania, and you name it.
You could probably teach the class.
Well, but it is.